Right, we will move back in as through the vote back into open session. So our next item up is the administrative reports. Is that right? Okay, so I will turn it over to Tasha.
Hello, so tonight we are going to have Brian Anderson. He's a CPA and Senior Manager for Whitfleet. And he is going to be reporting on our audit for the 2223 school year. And he's joining us virtually today or tonight. And I'm assuming I think I see him up there. Yeah, okay. All right. Hi, Brian.
Okay, yeah, sounds good. I can take it away here. So yeah, once again, Brian Anderson, partner on your engagement here. So just thanks for allowing me to join you virtually just to kind of highlight a few things on the audit and then just be available for questions. So I won't take up a ton of your time, but maybe just get you some comfort level on how the audit went. So if you have your audit in front of you, I can kind of go through a few things. Start off on page one, which is our opinion on the financial statements. That's what you hire us to do is give an opinion on the financial statements. It does mention in there in the first paragraph that we audited the financial statements for the year ended June 30th, 2023. And then the second paragraph mentions that in our opinion, everything is fairly presented. So that means it's a good, clean, unmodified opinion, meaning there's no issues that we found with the 2023 financial statements based on our audit procedures. So the opinion does kind of mention the basis for our opinion, what's management responsible for, what we're responsible for. So you can kind of read that as you wish, but like I said, nothing really different or changed from the prior year. Going on, the first set of the financial statements is on page four. This this set of financial statements does include the capital assets and the debt. Usually you don't see this or use this much in your day-to-day decision-making because you can't sell capital assets. And with the debt, you're going to levy in the future for it. So it doesn't make a big a decision with your day-to-day, but it is kind of good to get an idea of where the district is. So the things that we're looking for there is that net position categories in the bottom, making sure you have a positive balance in all three categories. And you do with 13.9 million capital assets net of the debt used to acquire that those capital assets, 1.9 in restricted and 6.4 million in unrestricted net position. So going on to the financial statements, I guess, page five, we kind of just point out how your financial position changed during the year. And we do have a $2.9 million increase in that position. So that's obviously a good trend. And then you kind of go on to page six, you have your fund position. So once again, we're looking here in the fund balance category, making sure you have positive balances in all categories, and you do. The one number there probably the most important is the $6.2 million of unassigned balance in the general fund. So the general fund is what you have, the biggest budgetary control is aboard. So that's a position of 6.2. And then we kind of compare that to the expenditures on page eight of 20.6 million. Just kind of see how much you would have in fund balance if something went wrong, how long you'd be able to survive. And usually we say anywhere from two months on the low end, maybe the six, seven months on the high end for a school district. And you're right there in the middle is maybe having about three, four months of cash on hand or fund balance on hand to survive any, any low times. So I feel like that's right where you should be. And hopefully that's enough to kind of budget. I know I mentioned last year, you passed an operator referendum. Unfortunately, you didn't. So I'm sure you're trying to manage your cash flows as best you can with, with the budget you have. There's a lot of notes to the financial statements, so I won't kind of go into too much detail on that, but you can kind of read that as you wish. Probably the next thing to point out is maybe the budget to actual comparisons on page 37 kind of gets you an idea of how you did compared to certain budget amounts. And I think in the end, revenues were under budget by 5.5, but then the expenditures were also, I wonder if I have an issue there in my report now that I'm looking at it. Maybe I'll look into that later. I hate to catch issues here later, but it looks like I do have it here. So sorry about that. I think in the end, your, your revenues were over budget by 1.3 million instead of the 5.5 that's in the report. I think I had a formula issue, but your expenditures were under but over budget by $1 million there in the end. The change in net position is a positive change. So that's what you're looking for in your general fund. Let's see, scrolling on, there's some additional notes on the pension, OPAB, which is other post-employment benefits. And then the smaller funds are also detailed in the back. But the next thing to point out is on page 54, since you do get a good amount of state and federal awards, we are required to give an opinion to make sure you got proper internal control over your financial reporting and making sure there's no major compliance issues. And with the first section there, internal control of our financial reporting, just a couple of the findings that we've reported every year since we've been doing the audit. And those are detailed in the late, later in the report with segregation of duties. There's just a smaller staff, so there is opportunities there for somebody to, to kind of do multiple stages in the internal control process. So we just kind of emphasize that the board reviews everything and management as well just to make sure you compensate for those weaknesses with the lower or with the smaller staff. And then the final item is we prepare the financial statements. So that's a finding as well. Once again, same thing, just kind of review everything, make sure it looks good to you just because we're not there every day and we might catch something that could be smaller. We don't think we catch, miss anything that's material. That's why we don't raise it to a big level, but it's just something to keep an eye on. The next opinion is on page 56. This one's kind of an opinion that we specifically do on certain major, certain federal and state programs based on a risk rotation every year. And we're happy to report there's no compliance issues there, and we feel like you got a good system in place to handle the federal and state awards. Page 59 and 60 do list out those federal and state awards in case you're curious. Page 62 is kind of summary of the findings and question costs that we had, just the one significant deficiency that, or the two significant deficiencies that I mentioned before. It mentioned we specifically audited the COVID Education Stabilization Fund at the federal level. In the state level, we did the General Equalization Aid. And then the state does require us to do certain procedures on the medical assistance program. So once again, we didn't have any issues with the programs that we did test. Page 64 does list out those findings that I did talk about, so you can read that in a little bit more in-depth on what the finding is and what the response is. And then that's the report. And then kind of highlight the required communication letter, kind of the same similar things that I just talked about, what our responsibility is, what your responsibility is. There on page two, it does mention there was a new accounting policy in effect this year, but it didn't have any impact to the district just because you don't have any long-term, any, any major long-term technology arrangements with anybody else. Kind of the standard qualification there in the middle of the paragraph that there is estimates in the financial statements. We're not able to say for certain on how some items are going to turn out with how long capital assets are going to go. And then the net pension liability, supplemental pension liability and net OPAB liability, they're kind of based on some actuarial evaluations there. The middle section, no difficulties in performing the audit. We didn't have any corrected or uncorrected misstatements. So Tasha and team did great, giving everything to us in an accurate manner, and we didn't have any audit adjustments. So good job to her and the team. No disagreements with management. They kind of represented that they gave everything to us. They didn't consult with any other accountants and no other major issues to talk about here. So the last section of the report just kind of reiterates the findings that we mentioned in the report. So all in all, a good, good, clean audit and no major concerns from, from our perspective. So I know that was quick, but is there any other questions anybody has for me while I'm here?
Are there any other questions? One question I had with the one finding, I know it's been for the last couple of years when the staff is too small. What size school districts would have additional staff to review?
I would say, yeah, I mean, you're going to get up into the six to seven people in the accounting office in order to kind of get rid of that completely. I mean, Madison is one that we do, and they, they don't have that issue there. Yeah, I mean, like you get in the Middleton type area, they probably are okay from them. Yep, they probably still have issues, but it's nothing significant. We have to report that in writing. So I'd probably say just maybe double your size. You could probably get it into where you don't think it's that significant to put in writing. And then maybe triple, quadruple your size where it's going to be completely gone.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, no problem. Thank you. Appreciate it. Have a good rest of the meeting.
You too. Okay.
And thank you to the business office. I know responding to audits is a lot of work. And so thanks for that.
All right. Super. All right, moving on to our next administrative report, unless Tasha has anything else. I don't. Okay, we will move on to Erin and the proposals for the new, new courses.
Hi, we have quite a few, as you saw, course proposals coming for next school year. So this went out to teachers. I started mentioning it to them in October. They were due by November. We took it to our admin team in December for, or end of November for kind of their approval and looking over some of the options of what we were offering. And I think from that, one of them, the team decide, or even within the building, they decided not to end up offering. And so what you have is the finalized list of the courses they would like to offer. So AP Psychology is one. This is a course that year after year, we end up having a lot of students take through Jedi. And so instead of having them do it on their own or have them do it through Jedi, we're able to offer it through the school. It does require professional learning this summer for the teacher, and it will require a textbook purchase because they do require you have us, like they give you the options. You can choose from any of these textbooks, but you must use one of them. But other than that, there's not a, a large ongoing cost associated with it. And then that obviously that's going to reduce the number of students taking Jedi courses. In tech ed, this is really, we put it in as a course proposal. It's really more of a significant change, and that is only listed as a significant change because it's going to dual credit with Madison College. And we will have to, Jeff actually is being, I believe, paid to do the training for it. But what it is, is it's really updating what he can offer to be more in line with industry. And so he was pretty excited about that option. There are two courses coming out of our fax departments of Family and Consumer Science. I did talk with Audrey about it and just said, you're already running a really packed schedule, like how is this going to work? And so we did talk about some options, rotating courses, even your odd year, just to provide her some sanity in terms of how many different classes she's teaching in a semester, but also to ensure our kids have opportunities to grow their skills. And that's why she offered these, she wants to offer these two courses is because it takes things to the next level. As she said, she has, you know, those different like intro level courses. I mean, she really wants to be able, and students are asking for a more rigorous or higher level of courses. So she has both World Cuisine's Two and Classic Cakes and Cake Decorating. I also talked to her about, you know, that comes like, does that just replace whatever course? Is that a similar food budget? She did say that the costs, especially for World Cuisine's, would be slightly higher. And that's because they're going to use different proteins that are going to cost more than what they would normally do in World Cuisine. So it's things that are going to be a little harder to come by locally that she will have to, to get. Otherwise, it tends to be just those, she already has a reoccurring budget as part of her program, and so she would still be using that. In science, same thing, it's a course adjustment. It's making biotech a dual credit course through Madison College. And we are still in the works, but I put it on there as horticulture to also get that aligned dual credit. That doesn't change what like Luke is already doing. It just provides students with that opportunity to also earn credit through a technical school while they're taking it here. There's no extra usually assessments, small tweaks just to align with whatever the technical colleges are doing. So half are new and half are really just looking at making a course we already offer, something that is going to be more beneficial for students. Do you have any questions about the courses that staff have proposed?
You know, I, I will say, these courses look very good to me, you know, in terms of where you're going with it. I, I was trying to figure out, how do you resource it, you know? But you've said maybe one semester you have one and one semester another, or you change a course to fit.
Yeah, so like in Family and Consumer Science, is that what you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, so what a lot of our, what I've seen other districts do, and in my experience is when a department has more courses than they have slots in a year to fill, and it might be one of those things where if we run it every year, we don't get enough kids to take it. Or it's going to be a smaller group of kids who want to take maybe an upper level course, you offer it every other year so that kids still have the opportunity, like at least twice while they're in high school, to take it. And then it, you can get kids into your other classes as well.
Thank you.
Do you see us needing to add staff to the Family and Consumer Science program? You know, are all kids able to take the classes if they want, or?
Yes, she does work on an overload right now. So she is working an extra period. Does she do that all year, Kale?
Yes, we did do it this semester for personal reasons, but usually she's full overload. I could, I could do another three or four courses a year.
Yeah, just for her, for like the, the foods classes. I mean, ideally what we'd like to see is development of like an early childhood education pathway through Family and Consumer Science. That's just not her background. And so we want to utilize her for her passion and what she can bring our students.
Well, I know we talked about needing something in that vein in the middle school too, so possibly sharing somewhat staff with middle school and high school. But it sounds like it's a huge interest, so.
We ask her to keep her eyes open for any potential candidates so that we can grow that program. But you're right, she's so good at what she does that because of that, I think that she's personally grown that program to what it is.
Thank you.
I was going to ask about some of the costs associated with it. So currently each year, like kids, depending on some of the courses, courses they take pay an additional cost or whatever. So some of these costs might fall under what they're paying at the beginning of the year. Is that correct, or?
It could be added to a course fee. Yes, but I, when I talked to her about like what her course fees are and the general budget she has, she did think that there might need to be a little bit of an adjustment, especially for that World Cuisine's class.
Excuse me, I'm impressed that the description for the World Cuisine's Two class says that it will in part deal with influences of globalization on food products and culture. And I thought that was really cool to see. Also, I might be interested in being a judge for the World Cuisine's or Cake Decorating class.
That's always my favorite part. All right, any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we will move on to Tanya.
All right, just a quick note that per Act 143, we're bringing you the safety drill reports for your review. They don't have to be approved, but they do need to be brought to the board for your review. Kale will upload these safety drill reports into the Office of School Safety by the end of this month. Everything is going well. We actually increased our meetings with the police department just to continually review our safety plan and look at how we can continue to dig deeper into our safety plan and increase communication in the case of an event. And we've got a whole host of things that we're starting to communicate more in-depth on. And then Nick Beslik is working with me in the digital mapping grant. So we submitted the hard copy PDFs of the blueprints into the, to the group today. So they'll start working on those digital maps. And the two contacts are our police and fire chief, because those maps will also be given to those two apartment or two departments. They are both aware that this is happening, so that will also help to increase safety in the school district.
I was just going to say that the whole digital mapping grant is, grant is awesome because that was one of the meetings that I sat throughout WASB last year was about school safety and a school who talked about their digital maps that they had for, you know, fire and, and police and how that really helped just increase their amount of protection for us in knowing that mapping. And so that's awesome.
Yeah, I did send the board an email if you haven't had a chance to read it, but it was a nice news story that one of the Madison stations did on Madison School District, but I thought it just really laid out from the company that we'll be working with what that actually looks like through that process. So it helps to visualize it a little bit better.
That was a pretty good video. The one that struck me, especially with the high school is you might have a map of the original high school, and then you remodel something and you have that map, but you don't have a single map anymore.
That is our case with the middle school right now.
I think that that could be a very valuable resource and really make a difference in an emergency. So glad we're getting that.
Absolutely.
All right, are there any other questions? Okay, hearing none, we will move on to board reports, and we will move to Michaela.
Hello, so we've got quite a bit going on recently. Girls varsity basketball has a game tomorrow at Pfizer Forum at 12:00. I know a lot of people are missing school for that.
You're not supposed to say that during a live board meeting.
So a lot of people are very excited about going there. Boys varsity basketball has a game at 7:30 on Wednesday, Waterloo at home. And then wrestling, Varsities next meet is the 29th in Whitewater, so quite a bit away from now. I know there's a band concert on Tuesday at 7 o'clock at the high school. I've heard a lot of players exciting for, excited for that. There was also a choir concert last Thursday, the 14th. I didn't get to see it, but I heard it was pretty good. We also got new cafeteria furniture, super exciting. We definitely needed that. I know a lot of people enjoy that. So many people are like fighting for tables at lunch, like now I want to sit there at lunch. So it's fun and it's nice to study in the booths and the chairs there now too, just nice and fresh and everybody wants to be in there. So that was really cool to have. This week, there's also dress up days for the last week before Christmas break, and I know today was Christmas pajama day, and a lot of people enjoyed that. I saw a lot of Christmas pajamas. Interact last week, went to Lilac Springs and played bingo with them and did, made little snowmen out of like socks and buttons and stuff, and that was really cool. And then Optimus last weekend went to a Moravian Church and helped wrap presents for Christmas neighbors, which unfortunately I didn't get to participate in this year, but I've always really enjoyed that. It's super fun to do. So pretty much that's what's going on, but pretty busy, so.
I just want to quick clarify for our virtual viewers that obviously in a tight budget to have new cafeteria furniture looks a little exorbitant. However, that purchase was made out of our food service fund, which is completely different fund that has its own limitations. And money goes into a fund balance based on the money we make off of food service. So that's, they did have a pretty significant fund balance because we do have a great food service program. So the purchase for all that furniture was made specifically out of that fund to be able to spend down that.
And the good thing is, even though that is for food service, I mean, kids will use that as collaborative spaces for learning and after-school programming and all that. So it'll still affect the academic performance probably, so.
And even though they might be missing on Tuesday, it's good to hear that it's for a good cause to support our LCATs.
Yes.
I was going to say, I saw a community post too about the hockey at the Ice Pond on Tuesday night. And so there's a skate with the players afterwards too. And we have a Lake Mills LCAT who plays with our co-op. So it'll be a busy Tuesday for LCAT kiddos.
Okay, we'll move on to Ken and Kirk Correspondence.
Sure, the board did receive three thank you notes. The first one was from Brooke Sell, the kindergarten teacher. She writes, Lake Mills School District, thank you so much for the beautiful wind chime and kind words given to our family upon the passing of my father. It is a complicated situation and brings a variety of emotions, but it provides comfort knowing that so many are thinking of us. Thank you for your thoughtfulness. Love, the Sell family. The next one is from Sam Schuster, a special education teacher. He writes to the school board, thank you so much for the wind chimes. They are a welcome addition to our garden. It was such a kind gesture. Sam Schuster, elementary special ed. And finally, the last one was from legendary Lake Mills. To the Lake Mills School District, thank you for allowing legendary Lake Mills to use your middle school for our winter market. We had 75 plus vendors and a record number of attendees. The middle school was the perfect venue for our events. Thank you for all you do for our community. Legendary Lake Mills.
Thank you. I want to quick give a shout out to Megan here next to me. So when you see the thank you cards for the gifts that we give to our staff when they do lose a loved one, Megan really coordinates all of that, and there are some really special gifts that I think mean a lot to the staff. So Megan keeps close tabs on what is happening with the staff. So thank you, Megan, for all your extra work on that.
Okay, community input, we are now to, has there anyone been signed up for community input? All right, now the consent agenda. This month's consent agenda includes the approval of the following. November 20th, regular meeting minutes, November 28th, board workshop proceedings, December 11th, facilities committee proceedings, December 11th, finance personnel committee proceedings, November treasures report and vouchers and invoices and personnel report.
I'll move the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on any of the items? Okay, hearing none, I will ask for a roll call vote.
Brianna Beslik.
Aye.
Ken Imers.
Aye.
Andrea Graham.
Aye.
Kirk Lund.
Aye.
Amy Litcher.
Aye. All right, on to our action items. The library media policy 2522 was revised and to align with the new district library polit plan, which is required by the Department DPI. So this is a policy that was, the first reading was last, last, at our last meeting. So this is our next reading, so.
Well, I'll move the board approve policy 2522, the library media centers.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any comments, discussion, or questions? Hearing none, I will ask for a roll call vote.
Ken Imers.
Aye.
Andrea Graham.
Aye.
Kirk Lund.
Aye.
Brianna Beslik.
Aye.
Amy Litcher.
Aye.
All right, for the proposal for the new high school courses and the revision of existing courses at the high school that we heard from Erin, we have a motion to approve.
I'll move the board approve the following new courses at Lake Mills High School. Advanced Placement Psychology, Metals Manufacturing Two, World Cuisine's Two, Classic Cakes and Cake Decorating, Biotechnology and Forensic Science, and Revision of Horticulture to a Dual Credit Course.
I'll second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any questions or further discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Andrea Graham.
Aye.
Kirk Lund.
Aye.
Brianna Beslik.
Aye.
Ken Imers.
Aye.
Amy Litcher.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, next is the annual partnership with the Wisconsin Alliance for Excellence Schools that supports the statewide coalition to support strong public schools through the Wisconsin Public Education Network.
I'll move the board approve the renewal of the Wisconsin Public Education Network.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion, questions on the motion?
I guess, can I just clarify, within the invoice, it has the Wisconsin Alliance for Excellence Schools, so do we need to approve it with that title, or is the Wisconsin Public Education Network okay because it's in partnership with?
That is a good question, I've heard them use both terms interchangeably, but I think if you wanna revise the motion for, to approve the invoice with the Wisconsin Alliance for Excellence Schools, that might be better.
Would there, would it be a friendly amendment?
Yeah.
Okay, so, the person, I think you can propose, it wasn't, who proposed it first?
I did. Okay, so I'll move the board approve the renewal for the Wisconsin Alliance for Excellent Public, Excellent Schools.
And that's a friendly amendment, is the friendly amendment seconded?
I'll second.
Okay, so now we don't, so we're now voting the friendly amended proposal. Any questions? Okay, roll call vote.
Kirk Lund.
Aye.
Brianna Beslik.
Aye.
Ken Imers.
Aye.
Andrea Graham.
Aye.
Amy Litcher.
Aye.
Okay. Now, a discussion that was had at the closed session about creating a new position for the Director of Community Education.
I'll move the board approve the creation of a Director of Community Education position.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, just for the open session, maybe some more, some background, this is a position that we're moving the rec, the Director of Recreation into this position, it, moving that position, changing the position into this, and therefore it's, it's to further provide community education, so.
It also does a lot with creating opportunities for students beyond high school, or, you know, while in high school, internships, apprenticeships, it really tries to manage those in a way that gives the most opportunities for kids, so.
I was gonna say, and I loved our conversation about really focusing on what kids needed, right, because as a school district, our focus is on kids, and so with those partnerships, being able to take some of the people within our community potentially and help them expand, like, we just approved cake decorating, maybe there's somebody who would love to do that at the elementary level, or the middle school, at an after-school club, so ways to partnership and create relationships with kids and people in our community to enhance some of those after-life things, or after-school things.
All right, any other questions, discussion?
Was it seconded yet?
Yes, I believe it. Was it seconded?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, then I will ask for a roll call vote.
Brianna Beslik.
Aye.
Ken Imers.
Aye.
Andrea Graham.
Aye.
Kirk Lund.
Aye.
Amy Litcher.
Aye.
All right, finally, the gifts, and we have a long, wonderful, generous donor list, so who's gonna read it?
I'll move the board thank all of our generous donors for their continued support for our students and programs of the Lake Mills Area School District, and because of the long list and lots of names, I apologize if I don't have your name pronunciated correctly. So our list is as follows: A one-hundred-dollar donation to the mill from Gerald and Donna Brzezinski, eleven turkeys donated to the mill from the Lake Mills Market, a three-hundred-dollar anonymous donation for student food service accounts, an anonymous donation of eight boots and five coat and hat sets for the elementary school students, a four-hundred-dollar donation from the Lake Mills United Methodist Church, an anonymous donation on behalf of Corey Beckett Electric of ten fifty-dollar Walmart gift cards to the mill, a five-hundred-dollar donation to the mill from the Bank of Lake Mills, books valued at six-hundred-and-sixty dollars for the elementary school library from the Cullen family, T-shirts donated to the seventh-grade students and staff valued at one-thousand-two-hundred dollars for the community service project from the Lake Mills Police Department, speakers and installation valued at one-thousand-nine-hundred-seventy-five dollars for the high school gymnasium sound system from Michael Allison, and the following donations for the Lake Mills Recreation donations: A thousand dollars from Brad Vale, a thousand from an anonymous donor, three hundred from Karen Ferris, two-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars from Lynn Austin, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars from Dorothy Christensen, two-hundred-and-forty dollars from Ken and Kate Wisgoss, two-hundred dollars from Donna and Eugene Thomas, a hundred-and-twenty dollars from Renee Staub, a hundred-and-sixty-five dollars from John Sanft, a hundred-and-sixty-five dollars from Carol Burrows, a hundred-and-sixty-five dollars from Noel Burns, a hundred-and-twenty dollars from Renee Staub, and the following donations of a hundred dollars from Erin Ganthie, Edward Jones, Pamela Murak, Vickian Morris Wickliffe, Christine Redding, Tom and Wendy Burns, Rose Pfeifer, Amy Arntston, Mary Dennis, and Jane Radel.
Can I ask how long the mill has been in existence? Kale, I'm looking at you.
It's been in that capacity maybe four years.
That's it, oh my gosh, they just have a huge following and support, it's just wonderful. And is it run by the students, correct?
For the most part, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So do we have a second for the gifts?
I'll second.
Okay, sounds good. All right, thank you, thank you, thank you to all the community partners, thank you. So, I will ask for a roll call vote.
Ken Imers.
Aye.
Andrea Graham.
Aye.
Kirk Lund.
Aye.
Brianna Beslik.
Aye.
Amy Litcher.
Aye.
All right, upcoming board action, upcoming board agenda items for our November, for our January fifteenth meeting, we will have the school board election update, and we will take the action items on the school district calendar for the 2024-25 school year, Wasby resolutions, and open enrollment seats. Okay? All right, now, with nothing else to do, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll move we adjourn.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, we are adjourned.